Thanks to the regular session of the Reno County Commission this Tuesday, April 12th. We'll do our traditional pledge of allegiance and then have a prayer from Pastor Kim Bury of Trinity United Methodist. Raise your hands.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Loving God, this week years ago told the story of Jesus's crucifixion, death, and resurrection. A time of sacrifice and deep love for all humanity. We thank you for the gift of your love, God, and the sacrifice of your Son so that we might have life eternal and abundant. Today in this meeting, may the good of humanity continue to be a focus of your people. Guide our leaders to make sound decisions, listen deeply, and work for the good of all. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Welcome again. Looks like we have a few proclamations to do this morning before we get started. Just a couple notes from the chair. The wanted to extend the county's thanks to Senator Moran and his visit yesterday to the county. He and I toured a little bit of the fire destruction area yesterday. And then he spent a good 45 minutes just thanking the fire community, the fire department, and all their effort and listening to their issues. And he sends his praises for all the work they've done and offered to help us in any way possible related to getting some grant funding or help from the federal systems that are available to support our efforts for mitigation so we can work towards less fire in the future. So appreciate his work in the county yesterday. With that being said, I think we'll go ahead and move into the proclamations. It looks like we have two here that are going to be accepted by Erica Lottick from the Kansas Children's Service League.
Yes.
Right, Erica? So if you want to come to the podium, and I'm going to let her read the proclamations. Which one are you going to do first, Erica?
The Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Okay.
Okay. Whereas children are the key to the state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life. And while children are our most valuable resource, they are also our most vulnerable. And whereas children have a right to be safe and to be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening Kansas families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of maltreatment, providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds, and consequently building the foundations of communities. And whereas we must come together as partners so that the voices of our children are heard by all, and we are as a community extending a helping hand to children and families in need. And whereas providing a safe and nurturing environment for our children free of violence, abuse, and neglect, we can ensure that Kansas's children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this state and nation. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure each family has the support they need to raise their children in a healthy environment.
And now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Reno County, Kansas, hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent child abuse, thereby strengthening the communities in which we live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead with your next one.
Okay. Whereas the Early Childhood Council and other local organizations, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 18th through the 22nd, 2022. And whereas these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities, which are crucial to the growth and development of young children and to bring better futures for everyone in Reno County. And whereas all young children and their families across the country and in Reno County deserve access to high-quality early education and care. And whereas in recognizing and supporting the people, programs, and policies that are committed to high-quality early childhood education as the right choice for kids.
And now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Reno County, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 18th through the 22nd, 2022, as the Week of the Young Child and encourage all children, all citizens, to work to make a good investment in early childhood in Reno County. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any comments to?
Just thank you for your hard work in this area.
Thank you.
And we appreciate it as well. And, you know, I think you've seen our focus in childcare and early childcare development and our ARPA funding recently. And appreciate your work as well.
Thank you.
Give you these. Do you need a picture or anything?
I don't, I don't think so. Well, thank you. Yes, thank you very much.
I don't have the other two commissioners' signatures yet, so.
I'll sign them.
Okay. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Next up, we have the Sheriff's Office. Captain Blumenhorst will be here to do a proclamation of National Police Week. Would you like to read your proclamation?
Oh, thank you. Levi Blumenhorst, Captain of the County Sheriff's Office. Good morning, Commissioners. Proclamation for National Police Week, May 15th through 21st, 2022. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas, from the beginning of this nation, law enforcement officers have played an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms which are guaranteed by the Constitution and in protecting the lives and property of our citizens. And whereas, through constant application of new procedures and techniques, such officers are becoming more efficient in their enforcement of our laws. And whereas, it is important that our people know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police departments and the necessity for cooperating with them in maintaining law and order. And whereas, since the first reported death in 1791, more than 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including 175 officers in 2021 alone, with 426 dying due to COVID in 2021, for a total of 601. And whereas, it is fitting and proper that we express our gratitude for the dedicated service and courageous deeds of law enforcement officers and for the contributions they have made to the security and well-being of all our people.
And now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners, call upon all citizens of Reno County, Kansas, and all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May 15th through the 21st as Police Week. Please join us in commemorating police officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established themselves in viable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens and do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through the 21st, 2022, as Police Week. Furthermore, we call on all the citizens of Reno County, Kansas, to observe May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, to honor those peace officers who, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives or become disabled in the performance of their duty. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you. Thank you. If I, if I may also, please, everybody, commission, anybody who would attend, who would like to attend, the public is welcome to attend on May 13th, our observance of National Peace Officers Memorial Day. This will be in front of the Law Enforcement Center, as it has been for several years. The ceremony begins at 11:00. We'll have some opening statements. We'll have a guest speaker who will be retired Lieutenant Colonel Allen Steckline from the Kansas Highway Patrol. He is a Hutchinson resident who is a long-term, longtime public servant, a great friend to all local law enforcement. We will recognize fallen officers. We will have a posting of the colors by a joint honor guard between Reno County deputies and Hutchinson Police. There will be a plowing of taps by Reno County Patrol Sergeant. And again, we would invite everybody who would like to attend to come and join us on that day as we recognize and remember those who have given the ultimate sacrifice and served their communities and their country.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you.
Commissioner.
Commissioner. I have attended this for a number of years and would encourage everyone who can get away at that time to please attend. It's a very somber, appreciative moment to honor those who have fallen in their line of duty. And also, there's an opportunity after the service to partake with Crime Stoppers with regard to a chance to visit casually with the officers.
Commissioner, if you don't mind, I forgot to have you sign again.
That's all right.
Commissioner Sellers, if you have anything you'd like to add?
Have some questions.
No problem. I just wanted to check to make sure you didn't have anything to add.
No, I would concur with Commissioner Hurst's statement that I've attended these ceremonies several times and I would encourage our public to attend that service on May 13th, 11:00 a.m.
Thank you, Commissioner. Captain, we'll get this fully executed and out to you as soon as possible.
Thank you very much. You bet.
Okay. Thanks all for that work. It's good to remember those things. Next up, we have public comment for items not on the agenda. I think Commissioner Hurst indicated Jason Tetter would like to make a comment. Mr. Tetter?
So Jason Tetter, 4310 West Blanchard, just south of landfill. I'm here to tell you guys to at least drive by and look at all the trash leaving the facility of Reno County. You guys are responsible for this because you voted to make it larger. So I'm pressing on you guys to find a solution to catch the trash blowing out. I mean, you spent some money here a couple weeks ago to get a fence. It's 12-foot wide. You got a 12-foot wide fence and you got a landfill that's a quarter mile deep. So you guys need to, maybe it's management, maybe it's more litter pickers, I don't know. But we need to address this problem. And then today, it's going to be even worse. And so please, at least go out and take a drive and so you can understand where I'm coming from. This is in my front yard. This is not out in the county. This is my front yard. So please, address this. There's lots of other options. Get with your management team to figure out how to stop this. That's all I have for today.
Mr. Tetter, what was your address again?
4310 West Blanchard, directly south of the landfill.
Have you had a chance to talk to Megan at the?
Yes. Okay, yes. So, you know, I've heard lots of excuses about not being able to hire people. I've heard all kinds of excuses, and this is why I'm here. Because you guys, I mean, if we can't hire anyone, maybe we need to look for a subcontractor to do the litter picking. There's lots of different options to get this handled. I mean, if we can't hire someone, let's, let's find a solution and go with it.
Thank you for comments today.
Thank you.
Randy, I know we've been on that issue, and maybe you can just put that in your report as things progress. And then I'll try to go out and take a look at it sometime. Have you looked at it?
Yes, I have. Yesterday, I had occasion to go west, so I came by Blanchard Street, Blanchard Avenue there west. And they had picked up some, but whatever wasn't picked up is heading north today. And I think there are solutions. We just have to figure those out and get that done. And I think maybe the wind correction and the mileage, the wind velocity needs to be attained too, and the people need to know that. And I will have further comments. I don't want to delay the meeting, but I'll have further comments in my commission comments later on.
Okay.
Commissioner Friesen, we do have five temps out, and Megan does hire temp agents or temp employees when they're available. This isn't about not being able to hire because of money or because of any policy decision. This is employees out there willing to work and finding people that will do this work. The other option is we start closing the landfill more often. Just kind of let you, let you know some of the other options.
Commissioner Sellers, you got any comments?
Well, I guess I'd like to hear Mr. Hurst's comments at the end of the meeting. I did talk to the county administrator yesterday on this subject. And Mr. Tetter, I'm concerned about your concerns as being a neighbor of the landfill. And somehow, I feel that we need to do a better job, one way or another. But I would like to hear Mr. Hurst's comments at the later date.
Okay. So we're going to probably talk about it at the end of our meeting again during the Commissioner comments. And if you don't want to stay through two hours, you can visit it online.
I'll try to look online. Like, say, there's, maybe you can incentivize other county employees to go out there and pick litter.
Appreciate the comments again. Thank you. Number five, determine additions or revisions to the agenda. Commissioner Hurst?
I have none.
Commissioner Sellers?
No.
Staff?
No.
Okay. I have none as well. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. Randy, do you have anything you'd like to point out?
No, I don't have anything to point out on that.
Do any commissioners wish to pull anything out of the consent agenda for individual consideration?
I don't believe I do.
Okay. Questions only?
Hold on. You have a question after the motion is made to accept.
Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I would move to accept the consent agenda as presented by staff.
Commissioner Hurst moves all second. Comments on the consent agenda?
I'd like to ask staff about the request to item 6J, the request to zone 0.2 acres. My question centers around the fact that the Fire Committee has recommended having larger parcels in the fire district, particularly number two. I'm wondering, this is being done to allow another house to be built? Would this comply with what we're thinking about doing about larger parcels? Is someone there to address this question?
Well, I've read through those, Commissioner, and I don't know the answer. It complies with our current code. And it was, I believe, it was recommended for approval by the committee based on the zoning rules as written. I don't, I can't speak to whether or not it would be a problem for a, your question, I hadn't considered going into it. So I think that the committee reviewed it under our current law, under our current zoning code to give. It looks like they just need a little bit more land to be capable of a split, is my understanding. But that might still be smaller than would be optimal if we change the fire code. And it would be potentially, I don't know if this would become a grandfathered-in situation. So I have to, I hadn't been thinking that proactively when I looked at it. I just noted that it was recommended for approval.
Randy, is staff available to come in a little later today?
I could have them before the end of the meeting.
Would you like to hear from staff? Commissioner Sellers?
I guess my concern is that we had a presentation on these fire proposals, and I just don't want to let them lay around too long. I think we need to react to some of those, make formal recommendations to the planning commission if we haven't already. I don't think it's my place or the commission's place to decide how large these lots need to be. I think it would be a planning commission recommendation. But I would go ahead and approve this request, but I hope that we proceed quickly on the fire recommendations.
Okay. Any other items, Commissioner Sellers? Did you have any others, Commissioner Sellers, that you wanted to talk about?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Hurst?
No, sir.
I had one question on cash drawer. Is, is, is that just for, like, pay cash?
Commissioner, the reason we're laughing is we're just trying to do a little bit of cleanup and call it more of a cash drawer. The concept of petty cash is the idea that you would use cash for small transactions. And the county really wants to get away from that and just use a card, even if it's a very small amount. So the cash drawer is more for making change if a customer comes into pay cash to have cash available for that or for something similar to that. And so we had a whole, we spent a lot of consideration on whether or not to call it a petty cash or a cash drawer. And I think cash drawer is more appropriate, but it's very administrative and bureaucratic resolution.
It's a very good idea to look at from comes time to audit also.
Okay. Hearing no other debate on the consent agenda, I call for the roll.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes. Thank you, Donna. Okay. Budget presentations, we have one, two, three, four to do today. Just as a reminder to the presenters, thank you for being here. We do have your entire presentation in our packet, so you don't have to read from the packet. I think generally, if you can give us a five-minute summary of the highlights, you know, tell us about your organization, you know, where your budget request is, as far as is it more or less? And then any kind of unusual or differentiating items that you may want to point out. So appreciate the time. And don't forget to state your name and who you represent and an address. So first on the list here is the Reno County Extension Office.
Good morning. I am Pam Pulse, and I'm Port of Culture Agent and Director of the Reno County Extension Office. And we're located in South Hutchinson. What we do in our office, we've got 4H, we've got Master Gardeners, we have agriculture, we have Family Consumer Science. And I'm happy to say that next month, we will be fully staffed again. We've hired some really good new agents, but agents with experience. And so we are, you know, the last few years since we haven't been full staffed, we never, we did not ask for any budget increases. But next year, since we will be full staffed and we've got agents with, you know, from five years to 30 years of experience now, we will need an increase to cover some of our expenses. So we're asking for a 5.5% increase. We have not had an increase in our budget. Four years ago was the first increase we'd had in 10 years. So in 15 years, we have not, we've had one increase to our budget. And we will need this because we did, similar to what the county did, where for, I've been there 24 years now, and our staff had continuously been underpaid compared to their peers. And we did, this year, we made sure our staff was equivalently paid along with their peers throughout the state. So that's probably the biggest reason for our increase. We also, three or four years ago, you know, we're part of Case State, and they have now required for our volunteers to be what they call VIP certified, so they need background checks, especially those that work with our youth. And we have probably 175 volunteers now that we do those VIP background checks with. And that's an expense that we did not used to have either. So, and they're about $25 a volunteer for, for those volunteers. So those are probably our biggest expenses. And, you know, we had a little bit of carryover because we weren't fully staffed. And so we were able to use some of that to cover some of our expenses. We've also made upgrades to our office this year, just some, some painting, some new plumbing that hasn't been done in the time, the 24 years that I've been there. So, and we've got a new vehicle that we're looking for. Our van is about 15 years old. And now that things are opening up and we're, we've got more staff that's more active, we've got those expenses coming as well. Questions?
Mr. Hurst?
Go ahead. Please.
This VIP certification, if I may call it that, of $25, is that any state reimbursement on that? Or is that just one of those other things that the state sent down to us locals to take care of?
Yes.
Because they mandated it, right?
Yes. And we could pass that cost on to our volunteers. And we've kind of decided, you know, there are volunteers giving us their time that they shouldn't have to pay to be our volunteers. So, so that's, that's an expense that we've decided to take on within our budget instead. So if we have to, that's what it'll come to, but we'd really like for it not to. Because they, you know, our volunteers, we've got a few in here right now, so, you know. And they give up their time to us without reimbursement for that, so.
Commissioner Sellers?
I have a question. Thank you for your presentation.
So Pam, I, just so I understand, and you probably said it and I missed it. So you, you've got a budget here. What, what's our portion that we're paying?
Currently, you give us $365,000, and we're asking for $385,000.
Randy, do you have any comments?
No.
You feel comfortable with the request? Are you just taking all of this to?
Taking all of them, putting it into the documents until we know the valuation and where the commission's going on taxes. It's kind of hard to make a decision.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do for Reno County. Next up, we have Reno County Drug Court.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Liberty Thompson. I am the program coordinator for Reno County Drug Courts. I work for Reno County Community Corrections here at 115 West First Street. Reno County Drug Court has been going since 2011, so a little over 10 years. Historically, the county has given us special alcohol tax funds. Those tax funds go to fund some of our program needs, such as Oxford House rent or transportation, medications, what we call recovery supports, barriers that our participants have that are getting in the way of them becoming fully recovered. So our participants are all people that come through Community Corrections. They're all justice-involved. They're some of the ones that we have that are most difficult to work with. Last year, we had about 15 graduates of the program. I think that's about average, yearly average for our, for a program for graduates. About 80% of them don't end up back in Community Corrections. So we feel like that's a great success for us, especially since these are people that are, people that come back again and again through the system. Our budget, as you can see, comprises a lot of different funding sources. So the county's special alcohol tax is just one of those. And the majority of that is, of our budget is personnel, which comes from the Kansas Department of Corrections. And then the. And then the rest is other community funding sources. And then a big bulk of that is also volunteer time from our collaborating agencies that their staff just volunteers their time to be on our team, which we greatly appreciate. Let's go to my spiel. So are there any questions?
Commissioner Hurst?
You know, I especially appreciate the Drug Court, and not only your graduation acknowledgement that most of us attended, as well as the, I don't know what you call that other program they had last winter with regarding to events that showed videos of people who had been through that.
Our open house.
So I appreciate that opportunity to hear and see and visit with those of you who are directly involved, and especially the judge involvement in that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sellers?
Well, I too have observed Drug Court, and it would appear to me that our money's well-spent keeping people out of being repetitive peers in court and people that have improved their life through Drug Court. So I think our appropriation of this is very appropriate.
Thank you. Yeah, I would concur as well. I think this is a valuable, a valuable investment that tries to break the cycle that we have with, with certain individuals in the community, and certainly seems cheaper than the other side of the process where you have involvement with the court and sheriff and district attorney and just a whole host of agencies that have an extreme amount of cost to the taxpayer. So this seems like a good investment to, to get in front of that expense. So thank you for your presentation. Next up, we have the Reno County 4H Fair.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Megan Miller. I'm the Treasurer for the Reno County Fair Association. This year, we've asked for a $2,000 increase. That takes us from $18,000 up to $20,000. And you guys have our proposal, but there are just a couple of things that I do want to highlight. One of our biggest expenditures is providing a facility, and at this point, we know for our 2022 fair, we're probably pushing that $11,500 mark just to rent the fairgrounds. We're always told to project a 4% to 5% increase in that, so conservatively speaking for the 2023 fair, I'm guessing we're going to be in that 11,500 to 12,000 neighborhood when it comes to renting a space. So that's a pretty big chunk of the allocation that we get from the commission, goes directly to providing a space for our youth and adults who would enter in the fair. One of our other big, I guess, income sources is community sponsorships. And last year, we had about $8,910 in sponsorships. I took a look at the books last night. Right now, we're sitting at $7,630 received for this coming year's fair. That's about a $1,280 difference. So we're gonna, we had a little bit of carryover from the last couple of years with COVID. We've had, the numbers were down a little bit. We had to cancel some activities in 2020, but a lot of that carryover is going to be spent this year. So as we look into the future, some of the increased costs, we've also seen over, from the 2020 fair to the 2021 fair, we did see an increase in participation, an increase in numbers. So we anticipate that as people become more comfortable getting back out into the community and doing more things, that we will also see an increase into this year as well. We're adding a couple of different activities. We're going to continue with the Ranch Rodeo on Friday evening, but we're also adding a fun event at Lake Talbot Saturday evening. We're going to have live music, we're bringing in food trucks, so it's just going to be a nice, family-friendly activity that the community is invited to. We're going to have a lot of advertising, so we're putting more money into advertising to really let the community know about the Ranch Rodeo and our new event, the music and food on Saturday. We also have the Family Fun Event on Sunday evening, which is, again, free food and inflatables, so that's also something we build into the budget as well. The other thing that we heard from the commission last year was to really grow the individuals and families who aren't part of 4H, aren't part of the FFA, aren't part of Scouts, their involvement in the county fair, and we took that to heart. So I challenged a lot of our open class superintendents to really expand their areas, offer classes that we could approach, Boys and Girls Club, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Tech, Disability Supports, Nursing Homes, the Rec Commission, the DIY businesses downtown, where they could hold classes, and then if those individuals wanted, they could bring their projects to the fair and display their projects. And that's what we did. We created new classes that will target those classes, those groups, those organizations, and allow those individuals to have items on display and come to the fair, really get to see what it is, and hopefully encourage more participation in other project areas. Another, I guess, class that we've added is a professional art class, so we're really looking for professional artists in our community, art teachers, instructors, that would be interested in displaying different forms of art, whether it's paintings on the wall or sculptures, and really allowing the community to see what we have to offer from our art community and, and then connect them back to their galleries or shows or something where they can, can have their art purchased, you know, into the future. So those are other ways that we're trying to expand and encourage more diversification to the county fair. With that, I guess I would open it to any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Hurst?
Well, taking part in 4H and FFA during my younger years, and having children attend both 4H and FFA, I think this is an excellent opportunity for them to show what they've learned and to learn additional items through the judging of their projects and the inclusion of Big Brothers, Big Sisters, inclusion of Boys Club, of Boys and Girls Club, the inclusion of Hutch Rec with the younger program. I think that that gives an opportunity for people to really expand their universe, if I would be, by getting those sponsors who do this to engage the youth in learning about different things, whether it's foods or whether it's raising a small garden, then being able to show their efforts. I think this could be really expanded, and I am thankful that you have decided to do that and are working on that project. But at the same time, I want to thank all those who participated in the 4H sale and the projects up there, because they make that possible. The businesses and the individuals who spend their hard-earned money to assist these young people in their endeavors, I think those businesses need to be really congratulated, and I appreciate the effort that the Sale Committee does in recognizing those, and those kids who send out their thank yous.
Yes.
That's tremendous, that they're learning additional things besides just showing.
Agreed.
Commissioner Sellers?
I have a couple of quick questions, hopefully for Peggy. Looking at the data that you provided, you show county assessment through 2021. What did we, what are we giving you for 2022?
Our allocation for this current year is $18,000.
Eighteen, and you're asking for twenty?
Yes.
And maybe Commissioner Hurst partially answered my concern for my next question. It would seem like in Reno County that you'd have more, going back to that sheet, sponsorships in the general fund from the Ag Committee, from the Ag group of people that work in Reno County. Am I supposed to understand that we really combine that general fund sponsorships with the sale sponsorships for a total that agricultural community supports your program?
No. Generally, the Sale Committee, they, their sponsorships, a lot of it comes in and then comes back out to the kids.
I understand.
Through their contributions. In our general fund, we send out over 300 letters to local businesses in our community. We don't just restrict to agriculture, and I think that's important, because if we're looking to grow this as a Reno County Fair, we're also looking for boutiques and restaurants, real estate agencies, tech companies. We're really trying to diversify this, because those businesses are also marketing themselves to all of the Reno County residents. So we sent over 300 requests for support and assistance, and, and that's what we've gotten back. I don't have the exact number of how many we've received, but it, that's about where we're at. Some of our agricultural sponsors will give us in-kind donations. They may provide us with the use of UTVs or gators at the fair to help move water or other supplies from one location to another, and unfortunately, we're not able to assign a dollar amount, because we, it's just an in-kind donation, but we do receive some sponsorship in that capacity as well.
Thank you for that answer. I have no further questions. Peggy, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the report. All makes sense. The one, I concur with the rest of the commissioners, but I appreciate the kind of interactive approach that you're taking with involving, you know, other parts of the community and the other economic interests in our community. So thank you for that multiplier effect and what you do. So thanks for the report.
Thank you for your time.
Seventies Economic Development.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Deborah Tufel with the Hutchinson Reno County Chamber of Commerce, and I am here to make our budget requests for three of our economic development-related entities that we manage at the chamber, those being Market Hutch, Greater Hutch, and this year, we're making a request also for the Growth, Inc. organization. The totality of these three funds, total $609,000 in operating budget. Of that, we are requesting $84,000 this year from Reno County, which would make up almost 14% of the total budget for these economic development programs. So I'll just try to quickly highlight what some of the work and where these dollars will be allocated. First would be Market Hutch. Market Hutch this year has contracted with Bauercom to initiate a new marketing strategy for the next three years. We have had another marketing firm that we have worked with in the past, and we're really excited to be able to work with Bauercom, because they're really helping us hone in and focus on a new strategy. So over the last quarter, we've been working with them on kind of the discovery phases, they onboard us as a new client. They are working on a detailed communications plan to allocate these dollars, and then three campaign concepts that they'll be presenting to the Market Hutch Board. And these strategies are not surprising. They are helping us with branding, helping us with the strategy to cross-sell and market to those that are coming into Reno County for events and attractions, building and leveraging a distribution list to help push that message out there via emails, some seasonal television campaigns, as well as leveraging all of the digital and social platforms that we use today and plus some more, and then helping stretch those dollars through co-op advertising that we have been doing with some of our partner businesses. That's what we've been allocating funding to in the past, is helping stretch the dollars of our local businesses to market themselves and promote them, to bring in new retail sales into the community. And just to kind of give a glimpse at how our retail sales have been faring over the last few years, this is a seasonally adjusted retail sales capture, which then you can see translates into sales tax dollars into your coffers. So those have been on the rise over the last three years, and it's a trend that we hope to continue through the Market Hutch marketing. Second organization would be Greater Hutch, and this is your economic development partnership that you engage in with City of Hutchinson, South Hutch, Reno County, and our private sector funders through a campaign that has been under the branding of Hutch Rising. We are now embarking on Reno Rising, and I've left a report with Randy that he'll distribute to you that's the full detail about the work of Greater Hutch, but not surprising, the key elements of that work are business retention and expansion, recruitment of new companies, enhancing our community development capacity building, as well as, more importantly than ever, workforce development. Just to look back at some projects that our staff has worked on to help either market buildings or bring to bear local and state incentives, KMS located in the Eaton Building, which was a great asset to get back into operational use that had been vacant for some time. J&amp;J Drainage embarked on their expansion last year, and we worked with them on state incentives. Superior Boiler and their occupancy of the new Corey Road Building. American Packaging and their doubling of their footprint in South Hutch. Bluestem Pace buying the building up on 23rd for their new operations. AgTrax moving to downtown Hutch. First Team Sports, you'll see steel coming up out of the ground, and the frame of that building is now in place for their great expansion. Bold occupying the former Target Building. DCI embarking on a new expansion downtown, and most recently, the sale of the Kmart building for the new Outwoods. I think it's critical that we occupy all of these buildings that have been vacant, but also work with existing businesses and new businesses to expand, which grows your tax base and, and helps you achieve all the things you need to do in your budget, so I have to point that out. These projects over the last few years have resulted in over 400 primary jobs. Obviously, that translates to new payroll, but it's also good to see how we're measuring up, both at the state level and the national level. This year, we were, it was announced that we were ranked 27 out of the top 100 micropolitans in the U.S. and the top micropolitan in Kansas in a publication called Site Selection. That's the cover of their magazine, I am not making that up. Kansas and Texas tied with winning the Governor's Cup in Site Selection Magazine this March, which, you know, they had to kind of play off of the Western theme of these two states. But it was good to see Hutchinson ranked 27 in the country and the top community for economic activity in state, in the communities across the state. We also do a business condition survey to make sure we are being responsive to the needs of business, and I'm not going to belabor this, the number one thing that's come out of that business survey this year is workforce. That's the biggest challenge, and so we are doing more in the area of workforce development programming. Lacey Jansen, who runs our economic development programming under Workforce, has implemented several new programs in the last year, including hosting a signing day in '21 that we're continuing this May to celebrate those that are going into technical fields in our community, also funding a fast-track apprenticeship program for HCC. That was a pilot program last year, and then this spring, we have kicked off the Career Quest Pilot Program. Would love to tell you a little bit more about that, but I know we're trying to keep this short. Our workforce initiatives are getting national attention. This was an article that ran in Business Facilities Magazine this last month. You can also see we're advertising in that publication to get the word out about the spec building that's going up in our community and just the great quality of life that we have here. We also provide funding to some outside agencies from the economic development funding that we receive, and so we provide funding to the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative with Hutch Rec to the tune of $20,000 a year. We provide a $10,000 stipend to the Boys and Girls Club for their Epic Skills Program. We embark on some downtown Hutch grants. Obviously, we're all in on childcare together, and as I mentioned, that Fast Track and Apprenticeship Program grant that we allocated to HCC and funding for Signing Day. Some of our work behind the scenes, in fact, a lion's share of our economic development programming dollars are spent on promotion, and so there are several ways that we do that. I won't get into all of those, but we know that we are being represented at some of the major trade shows in this country, also investing in Team Kansas and the Greater Wichita Partnership to really get the message out about Hutchinson and Reno County. That's resulting in RFP activity that's increasing, but the trend we're seeing there is that there's the ever-present need for buildings as well as large sites, and so our attention is really turning to these key economic issues in the next five years ahead. We are in the middle of our Reno Rising Rising campaign to raise $2 million of private sector funding over five years to support the work of economic development. That alleviates the need for us to come back to the governing bodies for more each and every year. That's the lion's share, 50% of our economic development funding is coming from the private sector. We're also, you know, embarking on partnerships with childcare, as I mentioned, workforce development, and housing, downtown and rural revitalization. But I put in bold two things at the bottom of this list that are really front and center for us this year. That is getting a spec building out of the ground, working with developers in our industrial parks to make sure that we have some product on the shelf, because if you don't have product, you're not getting people here to look, as well as large site development. Over the last two years, we are seeing larger and larger requests for sites. Of the 27 recent RFPs we have seen, those required 50 acre or larger sites. Over half of those required 100 or larger acre sites. So we are working, I mentioned this when we were working on the ARPA Work Session about large site development as a strategy. We also are going to be coming back to you at the next ARPA Work Session to talk about how we utilize the competitive resources that we have in this community to our best benefit, and we'll bring a proposal to you on the 26th about that. We do have a spec building coming up soon. IRBs have been approved for that. Salt City Investment is building this 57,000 square foot building in the industrial park. We already have two leads come in this week that will be looking at that. We do have a plan in place for large site development, and so the ARPA funding that you had earmarked at the most recent meeting could help towards that. I will tell you that we have applied for the base grant to help with that, and I know you guys provided the $1.2 million along with our $3 million to leverage for that base grant application. The bad news is that we just got word last night at 5:00 PM that ours was not one of the projects selected. The state did have 440 applications for base grants to the tune of $1.8 billion of requests, and they only had $100 million to allocate, and ours was not selected. That doesn't change the need for us to continue to be laser-focused on large site development, and so Growth, Inc. and Greater Hutch will still be laser-focused on that. We'll just have to figure out a different way to come up with funding to do it. This is a site sketch of the initial spec building site that is underway at the industrial park, that first building going up. And so just to recap, we would appreciate your allocation towards these three line items. Level funding for Market Hutch, a slight increase of $14,000 over last year for the Greater Hutch operations, and then asking for $20,000 from Reno County to match what City of Hutchinson is putting into Growth, Inc. And most of that would be used on the large site development studies. We are embarking on some environmental and geotechnical studies related to the land that we have identified to make sure that it doesn't have any surprises, and that would be the primary use of those Growth, Inc. funds from Reno County if you so choose to allocate those. So appreciate very much your partnership. We could not do this without the public sector investment in the work that we do, and just appreciate you making it a priority to help grow the tax base of Reno County. Questions?
Get a few minutes to get my thoughts together, but one thing I would like to comment on a little bit, and maybe I need your input on this, is, as you know, we have three primary targeted areas for the bulk of the ARPA funds. And so when we look at what you've done here, bringing jobs into Hutchinson and the future to bring jobs in, not knowing how soon that will happen, it'll happen, but just how soon, I think it's important that we look seriously at the housing situation. And so from that aspect, with what you gave me here, I looked at just briefly, somewhere on $20 an hour, you're looking at between nine and a quarter and $1,000 a month eligible for housing. So from that aspect, I think it's important that the housing we look at with, all over the county, that we structure, maybe look at that type of structure to provide housing. And I don't know where I'm leading with this, except I think it's important that, that the chamber is a part of the informational part of the housing, and which brings me back to the conversations we've had with regard to, Randy and I've had with regard to our housing conditions, and we look at maybe just Hutchinson, or maybe we look at Haven. But I'm wondering what a chat program might look like for Reno County. Community Housing Assistance Team, I think, is what that's called. But I'm just, sometime I'd like your thoughts on that, okay?
Absolutely. It's the reason we've invested in Healthy Neighborhood Initiative, because we think that it's important to make sure the neighborhoods we have are thriving, and so as a small piece of the work that Hutch Rec is doing to, within the community of Hutchinson, I think it's important that we do that, you know, countywide. We work with Haven Economic Development. I know they have applied for some housing funding. Housing is key. We're going to grow the economy and bring jobs to the community. Where are we going to put people? We have to have houses for them, and they have to be houses that people want to invest in. So you're absolutely right. I think we need to be at the table talking about housing.
Whether it's single family.
And childcare.
Whether it's...
I mean, they're all linked.
Single family or whether it's apartments, I think that's a critical part of the whole, of your whole program. And I really do appreciate all the work that the chamber's doing in not only attracting, but to concentrate on those businesses that are here in the county and helping them out, see what direction they can go to increase their opportunities.
Thanks. It's the reason we do the business condition survey and get out there and listen to what's happening in business. Of those projects that you saw, there are very few of those actually tapped into local incentives, and this is a conversation I know Chairman Friesen and I have had, that our incentive tools maybe don't match the reality of the business community today, and it's the reason we'll be coming back with a request for ARPA funding, but also just kind of a new, new way to look at how do we incentivize business growth for the future.
I've always been kind of a fan of the state's program that they offer, and I think that's something that we can look at here in the future.
We always make sure we leverage those in every way that we can. So there are some good tools at the state level, absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner Sellers?
Yes, Deborah, thank you for your presentation. I'd like to maybe tag team with what Commissioner Hurst has said about the importance of housing and a stable housing stock in our county. I believe you stated on the radio this morning, our unemployment rate is like 2. something?
2.7%. You heard it there, yes.
Okay, and with what you've found talking businesses, virtually that 2.7% is either not in the market to be hired or highly unemployable due to several reasons. It just seems like to me that, that if we're successful at growing our businesses, we've got to attract people to Reno County to be employed. And as most of you know, my hot button is, is if a housing stock is better, we might have a better chance of people moving to Reno County. Does that make sense to you?
Absolutely. It takes housing. It takes having childcare availability. It takes all of it to make this in a place that people can move to, Ron.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sellers. Deborah, thank you. You mentioned it briefly on, in your comments related to the status of, we had kind of an ad hoc committee meeting with community leadership and how we, I think we all realize that our economic development policies were kind of old.
Integrated.
And they needed to rework, and that kind of is revolving around new funding. So what's the status of that, and when do you think you'll be able to find an update on that part?
Right, and some of it will be determined on what's the scope of the funding that we have available. But let's just say that of the ARPA funding, if the county and the city could each carve out, let's suppose a million dollars that we could set aside in a fund to look differently at how we incentivize new business growth and development. The past economic development policy was very driven based on job growth, and let's be honest, most companies that are growing now are trying to figure out a way to automate, and they aren't necessarily adding lots of jobs in their growth strategy because there aren't as many people out there to be hired. And so to tie an economic development strategy simply to job growth is not really the best way to incentivize businesses to grow here. So I think that new proposal, Commissioner Friesen, will look very much like, you know, does this, does a company expanding here have a strategy that is in alignment with our goals and objectives as a county? Does it create new investment? Does it create stickiness of the business here? Is it investing in technology that are going to be companies that are going to be the next forefront of growth? And so it will be more subjective, I guess, in how we look at how we incentivize. So I think setting aside a pool of funds that maybe is overseen by a cross-county-city economic development board that can look at those and allocate funding maybe in a more flexible way and more responsive to the needs of business, I think is where that will go. That's what, that's what we would like to see happen.
And maybe we have a kind of a chicken or the egg thing here, but I think it would be extremely helpful in our budgeting for us to see that new vision in writing. I know you, I know you mentioned, well, it'd be nice to know how much that is, but I think, I think, I think to get us excited about the plan, I think we need to see a new plan, and I think that would help with whatever additional budget requests you may be asking for related to that item.
And the EDAC is reviewing that currently, and we hope to have that in advance of your work session on the 26th.
Okay, great.
Yes, to put a timeline to it.
Yeah, that sounds perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to take a break? Are you guys good?
Good.
Okay. Items and business items. Item 8A is Community Corrections. Looks like Randy's here. Ready?
Good morning, Commissioners. Randy Regier, Director of Reno County Community Corrections. For just a quick reorientation again, this comprehensive plan grant is the money, the state general fund money that's passed through the Department of Corrections to Community Corrections, to the county for adult supervision. So you've got two pieces there in this grant, the adult supervision piece and the behavioral health piece. Both, in both parts, we've been instructed to do flat funding from this current fiscal year. So it's $766,000 for adult supervision. It's mostly personnel, and then also just the things we need to operate, supervision portion, and then just under $167,000 for behavioral health services. Again, those are services targeted towards things that clients need. It's a lot of contractual money for services to clients. It's a little bit of in-house programming, but those are the two pieces. To kind of focus a little bit on money here, what I'd say is, these are the current amounts that we've been instructed to use. The governor, in the governor's budget request, and now the legislator has approved a $2.6 million increase for Community Corrections yet this fiscal year, so really within the May and June, and then $8.4 million increase for next fiscal year. That money is to be targeted for personnel. We're not really going to know what our allocation amount is going to be in addition yet for, yet this fiscal year and next fiscal year. We're hoping to have that information late in April. So they are putting more money and dedicating more money to Community Corrections, but I'll kind of stop there. Do you have any questions on the grant? I know I've provided a little information. I tried to provide some information in that summary to dial in from the larger grant.
Does, does the county match any of this?
No, sir. You guys were very gracious, the board was very gracious this last year, in allocating some money towards personnel within Community Corrections. We've worked really hard to be very frugal with the grant dollars we have within the state. And then, you know, the, as my reports have indicated, myself and a lot of other directors and staff from Community Corrections across the state have worked really hard with the legislator to go after this additional funding. This is certainly not the amount we needed. The amount we needed is closer to $14.5 million, but the $8.4 for next year is a step in the right direction as far as we're concerned. So there's not, there's not a match from the county. This is all state general fund money.
I think you can keep going.
Those are the main things. I won't, I won't belabor the data or the goals in the grant, but if you have any, any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Mr. Hurst?
Very thorough report here, and we've had conversations before regarding whether some, any potential needs in the future, and so appreciated that time you stayed.
Certainly. We're staffed at about 75% of what we need based on our average daily population by risk level, so we're trying to do the best and go as efficient with what we have.
Commissioner Sellers?
I have no questions. I would make the motion that we approve the grant submission as recommended.
Second?
The motion is second. Sounds like we've had most of the discussion. Commissioner Hurst, Sellers, you have anything to add? I think, Commissioner, okay. Randy, appreciate your work. It sounds like you're working in with the resources you have, so appreciate that. Is there anything else you need?
We're gonna, we're gonna, yeah, there's always things we need. I mean, when you look at the amount of requests we get for things like Oxford House money to help people with temporary housing in the community, with mental health medications and treatment, those things could, they could go on for forever. You know, we're just, some of those things that we're doing, we're really seeing continue to increase. Mental health medications is one of those little things that, you know, as our clients learn that, hey, look, we can help with these things, we're doing more of it. For a lot of our people, they sit in jail, and then they're going to go to inpatient treatment, and without those mental health medications, we've had treatment providers deny them at the door. So if they don't have the medications, we're not even going to accept them. So some of these things that are real technical that we're just going to continue to work on, I think that it's just really important to understand that the majority of the work we do is an probation officer sitting down with a client, trying to help them see a different way of living, working through, you know, 20 bad years of training that this person has received and drug addiction, mental health issues, to try to help them not only find resources, but then really address criminal thinking with those individuals. It's just a different way of thinking, you know, and so officers are really having to work hard to, with the clients on that. It's interesting, one of the researchers that I enjoy listening to says that to be a probation officer, you should have to be a clinical-level therapist to do the work that they're doing. Well, we certainly can't afford that. We have great staff, but that just kind of goes to show, there's a lot of really difficult work that our officers are trying to do and work through to, to help people be successful.
Well, I appreciate the commentary, commentary, and, you know, I, similar to some of the other items on the agenda today, I, you know, it's been enlightening as a commissioner to see all of the money we spend for criminal activity in our county, and to the extent you're working on the side to break the cycle and, you know, reduce those costs, I appreciate it. I, it's, it's a tough situation financially for the county because it seems like what you do is can take years or decades to really make full impact in the community. So I don't know that we, it's easy to see impact, but I certainly, you should certainly keep a surprise at small things that we can do to assist in, you know, breaking that cycle. Can't buy clinical therapists, but...
I understand.
But if there's other unique ideas that maybe help you in that effort, I think it's a good long-term strategy for the county. So thanks for your work.
Thank you. I think we need to vote on that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers. Pro call, please.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes. Item 8B is...
Item 8B is approval of the fiscal year 2023 Kids Department of Corrections Juvenile Services Comprehensive Plan Application.
Some mouthfuls.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Jessica Susie. I am the Juvenile Intake and Assessment Supervisor at Reno County Youth Services. I've worked in conjunction with Randy to develop this grant plan in response to the Department of Corrections, their fiscal year allocation of funds for our core juvenile programs in the, in the community. That would include Community Corrections Programs of Juvenile Intensive Supervision Probation, as well as Juvenile Case Management, Youth Services Program of Juvenile Intake and Assessment, and then the Court Services and Media Intervention Program, which receives a small amount of money for client incentives. The, the state also allocates funds to our community for prevention services to juveniles. We have been funding the Rise Up Reno Prevention Network School-Based Mentoring Program for several years and anticipate continuing to fin, to fund that program this year. Our funding, again, is flat level funding for this year. They've allocated the same amount to us that they have in the previous fiscal year. You can see the breakdown there of how we have budgeted that out. There have been no significant changes to the funding, aside from what Randy mentioned about additional funding anticipated to be coming in for personnel that will need to be allocated once we receive that funding. The grant format this year took a little bit of a change in how they're asking us to submit it. It is an online format now solely. And so with that, they have added requests for goals for our programs as well. You'll see that Community Corrections goals include working to develop a mission and vision statement for their agency and working toward going paperless. Juvenile intake and assessment, our goals are to provide additional training for our staff, begin implementing group intervention-type services for juveniles and their families, as well as streamline our reporting process for community stakeholders. I would entertain any questions if you would have any, and then would just appreciate your support in this grant proposal.
Commissioner Hirst?
Oh, I congratulate you on all of the, you and your employees who work with the youth. What I am wondering is how is your communication with school counselors? You mentioned that school relationship and any potential, we hear about nationwide the increase in some behavioral, I might probably say with regards to the shutdown of schools and the mask and all of this stuff that really took away some of our individual characteristics that each one of us has. So what, could you relay just a little bit with regard to what you're seeing out there with regard to schools, school counselors and the youth in general?
I can. I, I would say from a juvenile intake standpoint, we are, we are the first program that receives youth in the community from law enforcement. Whenever there is a referral to law enforcement regarding youth in our community, they come through juvenile intake first. And so what I can tell you from our experience is that we do have a lot more residency referrals currently after COVID and, and students that are trying to do online learning, sometimes we are getting more residency referrals because they're not following up when they're, with their online learning, or they have just gotten out of the habit of being at school on a regular basis. We also receive a lot of referrals for disruptions in the school, youth that act out at school and then need to be brought in for de-escalation, that are suspended from school. The juvenile intake staff does communicate with school counselors. I'm sure the probation officers do as well. That is also a key factor in the prevention program because they, the prevention program is a school-based program. And so they received referrals directly from the counselors at school, as well as teachers, parents, any school staff that, that knows of a child that would be appropriate for that mentoring program, they receive referrals directly from them and then match those youth directly with a volunteer mentor to help them in the school setting. So we recognize that there, there have been increased challenges in school in recent years and, and we are, we do maintain open lines of communication.
I guess I'm old enough that parents took care of that a lot at home.
And I, I would.
Parents need to step up.
Yes, seems like I have similar questions of Commissioner Hirst on all these groups today. Jessica, would you or have someone send me how the $41,914 is used by Rise Up Reno Prevention Network?
Yes.
I'd be interested in how their monies are spent, but I would also make the motion when the chairman's ready to approve this application.
Mr. Sellers, I can speak to that briefly now, and then I would be happy to provide any additional documentation that you need. Included in your packet is a summary of how their budget is split up. Most of the $41,000 goes towards salary and benefits for their program coordinator. That, that funds about 75% of her position. In addition, there are funds in their budget, operations provides background checks for the volunteers that go into the schools. They have to also complete a background check. Those are paid for through the grant. They have some advertising costs, and then they also provide recognition and incentives to the volunteers that, that volunteer their time. I know they do breakfast at some point during the year and, and some awards at the end of the school year. Their volunteers make a commitment to work with these students for the entire school year. They're expected to maintain that, that relationship. And then they're, they're welcome to continue their volunteering in additional school years as well. But if you would like a more in-depth breakdown of those numbers, I can provide that.
No, I see that breakdown now. I apologize, I didn't see it before, but most of that money is basically salary then.
That's correct.
Jessica.
Thank you.
What, do you, do you ever get funding from nonprofits?
Our agency does not. I, I don't believe that Community Corrections does either.
Is that a weird thing? Just like, is it ever, do any governmental programs like this get nonprofit funding?
Not the worst.
Why?
We're not real glamorous. You know, I mean, when it comes to certain programs, you, you look at even like the Drug Corps, they're able to get some, some funding for that because of, of the draw of what they do, but a lot of what the work that we do, and you look at intake and assessment, it's just not real glamorous work that people want to invest in. You know, you, you talk about the parents of the kids that we deal with, it doesn't, you know, if you talk to a few of us that have been there, tomorrow will be 24 years I've been with the agency. I've seen grandparent, I mean, I've just seen multiple generations come through. And so that, that's kind of what we're dealing with. And so, yeah, it's just not typically how things are done, is that it's funded by outside sources.
I'm not going to say it very well, but, you know, I've seen where nonprofits try to get kind of upstream of the problem. I mean, you might be a little too far downstream for, but I, I still believe, you know, there could be a component there. I'll send a note to our Community Foundation, just because I'm curious, you know, even if there was something small that would make a difference for you guys.
And the Community Foundation has helped with Drug Court in the past. One of the things, especially when you look at juveniles, the Department of Corrections is very specific in who they target. So if it's, for some of the grants we've had, even the reinvestment grants, some of those things, they're very specific on not one, the only kids that they'll, that they can help fund are kids that have gone through intake and assessment. And in years past, they've really targeted only the kids that were eligible for the juvenile correctional facility. So they're really targeting who's at risk of their highest cost resources. So a lot of those, when you go to prevention, if you look around the state, there's actually very few Community Corrections Agencies or Intake and Assessment Agencies that fund prevention because the Department of Corrections, just the money is so limited that they can only afford those, those core issues, you know?
We recently had a juvenile corrections advisory board meeting, and there was consensus among the J-CAB members that there, there is a definite need for expansion of services, prevention and early intervention services for families. We are seeing a lot more families that feel like they, they don't have the resources to address the problems that they're experiencing within our community. And, and there is a need for expansion of services. So, you know, that is something we would like to see as well.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Sellers, would you like to make your motion?
Yes, I would move that we approve the request to, for the grant application.
I would second that motion. Any final discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirst?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes. Thank you.
We're past 3-0. Thanks, Jessica. Thank you, guys. Sheriff, you're up. We got your report. Looks great.
Thank you. I'm not going to read that entire thing. I'll, I'll brief by exception. I have a few other things here to talk about, and I think we have a small video in a little bit that I wanted to kind of show you guys, some stuff. We've been working with Lori Moody, our PIO. Every opportunity we get, we have a training event or something going on, we try to invite her out to try to exploit what we do. Not a lot of people differentiate between the police department and the sheriff's office. So the sheriff's office has a lot of, a lot of moving parts, and there's always something going on. So yesterday, yesterday we had a pending ceremony where we had eight, eight deputies were promoted, one lieutenant, two sergeants and five corporals. Their families were present and they were, they were able, it was nice to see the spouses and, and the family take part in pinning their deputy. It's kind of a special moment. The job fair over the weekend, it went really, really well, from what I understand. We've actually had several, several deputies that were present at that job fair, and we got a total of four applications since then. We think that three of those were generated by the job fair, so hopefully those will work out. And want to say thank you to all those county employees that were involved with that. So over the weekend, the Patrol Division also conducted a four-hour saturation patrol. This is in partnership with KDOT. It's a grant that we applied for and we've taken part of since the 28 years that I've been working here. They help and they provide payback, the overtime for deputies going out and conducting check lanes and saturation patrols, primarily for intoxicated drivers. There were six deputies and one trooper. They made 42 traffic stops and wrote seven citations. They only tested two possible impaired drivers. Only one arrest was made over the, over the, that evening, and that was for drug charges. So there's, there's no intoxicated drivers out there, which, which tells me that there's a lot of good stuff going on. People are, are doing the right thing. We encourage that, especially going into the summer months where people become more active. The last thing we want to do is activate our meet and greet program by people driving intoxicated with our deputies. In my, in my brief, I kind of wanted to highlight something here. I mentioned the award for Narcotics Unit of the Year. I have the write-ups here that I will, I will give you to peruse. I have some stuff here that I'm not, that is for public consumption. So the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office Narcotics Unit wrote a lengthy nomination, and it included details of three different investigations, which involved 25 suspects or persons. The three investigations are considered a RICO case, which is racketeering, influence and corrupt organizations. Mentioned in the report, RICO involves two or more persons identified to be conducting criminal activity combined with the history of criminal activity. This makes up a RICO case. One of the investigations involved three different jurisdictions and a partnership with multiple agencies, which led to two search forms, one in Hudson and one in Wichita. While another investigation resulted in a seizure of five pounds of methamphetamine while serving a search warrant, it was discovered the suspects were also printing counterfeit money, checks and 60-day tags. Of the 25 suspects in just three cases, 11 of those have already taken pleas and haven't even stepped into court. That actually validates the excellent casework being done by this unit and not tying up court's time by not having a defense and going, putting, putting all those exercises to work. Sedgwick County also mentioned the year of the end totals, which was $449,800 in illegal drugs that were seized, $45,490 in seized currency, $90,074 in vehicle seizures. There were 75 felony arrests, 18 misdemeanor arrests, with a total of 102 cases that were worked by the unit. Sedgwick County also stated, I quote, "These deputies are great assets and make a positive impact on our community. This unit's an epitome of how good old-fashioned police work can positively impact their community." I got to give credit that this unit's worked with bare bones for quite a while. We, we tried to throw a few more deputies down there, try to help them, especially with the, with the overdoses that are, that are skyrocketing. So we tried to put some more effort in there and try to make an impact. One of the other things I'd like to comment on is it's been over a year since our, the special response team went independent, and we've sent people to a lot of good training. We got people in new command positions. We've added people, we've added equipment, and what I wanted to do is I wanted to perform an exercise to make sure that we could bring all those together. Commissioner Friesen and County Administrator was invited. They, they got to come out for a little while, but I know everybody's busy. This was a, the team knew nothing about this response, and we, actually Lori was out there and made a, made a short video, if we're able to, go ahead. So the, the Pratt County team was already, had already planned to come over. They knew nothing about the scenario. Our team knew nothing about the scenario. This was totally back planned by, by the captains. They wrote backstories and was able to trickle in information as the scenario drug out. We actually had a, a role player that came and assisted us. He does role playing out at, at the, at the academy out here in Yoder. So it went very well. There was a lot of things that fell into place, and there's a few minor things that we identified that we need to get better on as well, which was the whole purpose of the scenario. Last thing we wanted to do is go out on a real situation and not have brought everything together and find out we had gaps. But the Pratt team was phenomenal. We've been working with them for quite a while.
Okay, the next item I'd like you to comment on is something that has bothered me as a commissioner, and I think bothered many in Reno County. During my time as a commissioner, rapport between the Hutchinson Police Department and the Reno County Sheriff's Department hasn't been what some of us elected officials feel that it should be. Have you seen anything happen in the past year or so that suggests that our rapport between these two departments is going to improve in the near future?
You know, I know that our agencies work together really well. I will say that on my level, there's some leadership styles that don't... Aren't the same, but then again, we're two different agencies that operate in two different capacities as well. But when it comes to providing services for the community, we come together and collaborate very well. We've been utilized on call-outs with them. We still train with them. We still come together. I know the other night, they had an incident going on where we came into the city and responded to like three or four different calls for them. You know, so it depends on what level, the relationships are very well. I hope that answers your question.
Your suggestion is that the... Recently, they invited the sheriff's department to help out in the city when they needed you, and that's unlike when they had a situation where they called in the Newton Police Department?
So, yes. They did have a situation down in Caryville. That's what I refer to that part of the city as. And they did call us out, and we responded and helped them out, team-wise. And again, we still train together. That was very early upon our separation, where they really didn't know the status of our team and where it was. They're fully aware of where our team is now, how far we've came, what equipment and where our capacities are. We have to keep up regional standards. We meet those standards. We far exceed those standards, I believe, as far as having people and the training that we send our people to do, which is what our community deserves.
Okay, but just to follow up just a little bit more with this question. Isn't it true in the video you just showed that we have two of these teams now, where we used to have one team providing countywide services between the sheriff and police department?
That is correct.
See, as a taxpayer, I think we're losing something there, and I hope the city commission is watching and somehow the two of us could do more things together. I know we made a comment a few weeks ago at a city-county meeting that we need to cooperate better, and I think these contracts that we're referring to are hopefully in process, but there's just got to be some way to work closer together on a management side. So, that's my comment. Sheriff, thank you very much for your report.
Yes, sir. I understand. And let me just comment real quick that when we had one team, we only had one team meeting regional standards. Now, we have two teams that are meeting regional standards, and we've doubled our capacity within our own jurisdiction. So, the likelihood of actually having to call an outside resource, which could take hours of a response, we have a team here either way. Whether it's in the county, we'll call HPD, or it's in the city, they can call us, and we've actually doubled our resources for our community. That's how I look at it.
Thank you.
Sir, appreciate the report. Great video. It looks like you can use that a little bit for recruiting tools as well. I appreciate the opportunity to visit and watch your activity and your response team. It was impressive to watch, and it's impressive the amount of people we have that we can call to bear if we need them. And so, appreciate the opportunity to watch that. It was kind of fun to see everybody working together and see the equipment you guys have and everything. And I appreciate the idea that, you know, practice eliminates error. So, well done there. And I extend congratulations to the promotions yesterday. Apologize for not being able to be there.
Fine, sir.
Senator Moran showed up and, you know, wanted to tour the county a little bit, so... But appreciate you continuing to reward, you know, officers that are doing good work in the county as well. So, certainly echo the other commissioners' comments and certainly want, you know, continued, you know, cooperation where we can. I know there's different styles, as you say, between the county and the city, and so I guess we trust you a lot and your judgment on that.
Sure.
Thanks for that effort. Good report. Thanks for all you're doing. I know the sheriff's office doesn't give enough thank you for all the things they do and all the risks you take, but we do thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
On the light side, I would encourage you to invite Commissioner Friesen, if he hasn't been out there, to go down to the LETC on the vehicle training and the track.
I've done that. I have pictures to prove it. They haven't let me drive a car yet.
Well, I didn't do either.
That's next.
All right. Sorry, I'm waiting on that.
There's a picture on Facebook with my helmet on. It's very impressive, the way you can drive a stock car like that, so...
And I got to give credit to the captains of the divisions. I lean on them to provide me for information. There's so many moving parts to the sheriff's office. I can't reiterate enough how many good people are out there doing such good stuff throughout, from courthouse security to fender registry to, you know, corrections, patrol, detectives, and just other projects that are going on.
Yeah. Well, and that was the other thing I wrote down here that appreciate, and I think you can always... You can never do enough communicating with the public, and so I appreciate all of the leveraging of Lori and the videos and Facebook posts and all that work. So, keep that up. That's good stuff.
Absolutely. And we actually just implemented... We had discussion and spoke with the deputy yesterday. We have a gentleman that has a bachelor's from K-State in agriculture. He actually lives in rural Hutchinson and runs some livestock. And I think we're going to get more involved in the sale barn. That's our hope, to learn those agricultural folks, and that way we can rely on them should somebody bring specific cattle into our jurisdiction and try to sell it, because that's what happens. So, it's a... I think he's excited to do it. We're excited to have him do it, and kind of like our town liaison program, where they go out and they reach out to the communities throughout the county. But we're kind of excited because we've never had a good footprint in the livestock, and I hope this will help partnership with the community as well.
And, you know, you might consider, given the recognition that the narcotics team has had, you know, whether you would like to bring them here for a little thank you. I think it would be appropriate if you want to do that.
We can...
Maybe it's a... You think about it, but they have our thanks either way.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you.
May I ask you a question? Also, when you talked about the livestock, that you contact Kansas Livestock Association on their... Any programs they may have.
Sure. And, you know, Kendall Lothman, he's the Kala County Sheriff. He used to be a livestock agent for the Attorney General's Office. We went through some classes of his last week and real thorough education on some of that stuff, which kind of sparked this. Why haven't we been involved in this in the past? I don't know. So, we're going to try and see where it takes us.
Kami Roth is the KLA Reno County Chairman.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
On the agenda, in the agenda packet, the financial report year-to-date for 2022 through March is here, and I didn't know if you guys had any questions. Things are looking... Everything's on schedule right now. I didn't notice any outliers that caused concern, but I wanted to see if you guys had any questions on these, any of the numbers or departments' funds. Okay. And then the monthly department reports. For this meeting, we have aging public transportation, appraiser, automotive, county clerk, community corrections, communications, the DA, and emergency management.
Randy, I have a question that you might ask the public transportation director. I know when she gave her annual report, there was a request by myself to put up schedules in the kiosks that people use to... The shelters that people use to wait for the public transportation. I'm wondering how that is moving ahead. Maybe it's been done, but I'd like to have an update on that.
All right. I'll reach out to Barbara and get some information to you, Commissioner. Any other questions on the monthly reports? Okay. All right. It got kind of brought up by Commissioner Sellers during the sheriff's report, but I will give you an update. The city has sent us drafts of the three of the agreements that we have dealing with law enforcement issues. So, Paul Brown sent those last week. Patrick and I have reviewed... Are reviewing those now and will be meeting with the sheriff to talk about his, I guess, impression of what he is willing to do with some of the contract issues that... Since he is an elected official, but the contract is with the county commission, we wanted to make sure the sheriff was involved in discussions before we send a draft back to the city. So, they did send that to us last week. Then I handed out to the commissioners, next week or next commission meeting, there's going to be a work session to discuss ARPA monies at the end of the normal meeting, regular meeting, and I took the information that I had gathered from the last meeting of the items that the commission stated, buckets that they... The numbers they thought for each bucket at that time, at that meeting, which shows that there's only $902,385 left, if those numbers do not change. Then I also, on that sheet, showed numbers that could be changed with other requests that have come in. That's still... That shows $926,000 more than our $12 million, if you guys wanted to allocate some sort of funding to every request that has come in so far. I'll tell them what that number is. With any requests that had numbers, amounts listed, I put a number, the number they requested or general numbers, just to have them included so that you guys could look at kind of on a spreadsheet level, and I can email that to you, of where we would be at to fund everything. And I did include in that $500,000 for contingency. That would be overruns for other... Any of the items already budgeted, also for consultants, auditors, additional audits, auditors that we... Accountants that we may need to help administer the funds, or if the county commission desires to send out a request for proposals and come up with a consultant that would oversee the... All the monies.
Commissioners?
I like the idea of, since the county is responsible for how this money is spent, to make sure it's spent in the right way, so that we don't have to send any money back. I like the idea of having somebody from... Represents the county rather than each individual area oversee how that's spent. So, what form that takes, I think you're working on that, so, as administrators. So, that's my opinion on that, is no matter what agency or what commercial manager is, that we should be responsible for that funds directly.
Yeah. Patrick and I have both... We've talked and kind of worked on a request for proposals for a consultant, but also I think Patrick was working on an agreement language if we were going to use the community foundation or interface housing directly. The different options. I believe Patrick's looked at some of that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the way the ARPA funding works, the recipients of the funding are still required to send confirmation of what they did with all of it back to the county, and we're ultimately responsible for them sending it back to the federal compliance. So, we just have to make sure, you know, you guys will make the decision how to do allocation, but then we have to require the... Whoever does it, they have to prove that they did the right things with it and show receipts for everything, so that within... We can clear our audit, and the feds won't be upset at us. So, we're kind of working on continuity through all that, and it's going to be a fairly substantial project, to be honest, to account for the $12 million. I mean, it's a lot of receipts potential. Yeah.
Like a $10 million safe harbor or something to where...
That's for revenue loss, that category, but we still have to follow all federal guidelines on spending and still report what we do with that money. So, we can't just put it in our bank account or our fund and then do what we want. We still have to account for how that was spent. It just makes... It's a lot cleaner that whatever we expended on is... It qualifies for ARPA, the use of ARPA funds. That's what that does.
So, what is it? If anything qualifies, what is it you're auditing?
I mean, to be honest, fraud and misallocation, to make sure that somebody doesn't get a... The federal funds aren't used for a bad bid or just transparency, to be honest. So, this is something that a city with... A very small city with 50,000 of ARPA funds still has to show exactly what they spent the 50,000 on. It's not just because we're larger or anything like that.
Well, I'm going to push back on a half a million dollars for that. Like, I don't think we need anything near that. I think we need 50,000 for administrative work. If you're being creative here...
That's also contingency for other items. That was just a one-line item. That wasn't all for the consultant. That was...
If this is...
Consultant audit fees.
This is something else, like some sort of staff person that's going to do other things or whatever, like, we can talk about that, but I don't want to send...
Like a $10 million safe harbor or something to where?
That's for revenue loss, that category. But we still have to follow all federal guidelines on spending and still report what we do with that money. So we can't just put it in our bank account or our fund and then do what we want. We still have to account for how that will spend. It just makes, it's a lot cleaner that whatever we expended on is, it qualifies for ARPA, the use of ARPA funds, that's what that does.
So what is it, if anything qualifies, what is it you're auditing?
I mean, to be honest, fraud and misallocation, to make sure that somebody doesn't get a, the federal funds aren't used for a bad bid or just transparency, to be honest. So this is something that, a city with, a very small city with 50,000 of ARPA funds still has to show exactly what they spent the 50,000 on. It's not just because we're larger or anything like that.
I'm gonna push back on a half a million dollars for that. Like, I don't think we need anything near that. I think we need 50,000 for administrative work. If you're being creative here.
That's also contingency for other items. That was just a one, one line item. That wasn't all for the consultant, that was.
If this is.
Consultant audit fees.
This is something else, like some sort of staff person that's gonna do other things or whatever, like, we can talk about that. But I don't wanna send this money to consultants. Like, I think that's the worst place it can go. And they will take every dollar that we allocate, I guarantee. And they will find some way to spend it.
Yeah.
It seems more simple than, than, you know, it's made out to be, especially with the new rule changes. Like, I think the bar of like, ensuring that there's not fraud and waste is something that we can absolutely accomplish without consultants, but.
I agree. Your figure sounds closer to what I was looking at. I knew this was other items in there.
Maybe, maybe there's some other thoughts you're thinking of there, but.
Yeah, on this half a million, I was thinking other, if you allocate money to a project and they don't spend all the money or they can't get it, there's also contingency. There's another pot, we may start thinking of additional ideas. And to have a line item, that's kinda, these are afterthoughts, whether it, but also the audit fees. So we will be paying an additional audit fee for those few years for the money that's spent.
Do you, like, to me, an audit seems like a pretty, pretty, I mean, that should attain your bar of fraud and waste, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I understand, I mean, I'm not necessarily worried about it, but just the way the legislation was written, they wanted to make sure that it's all accounted for, so we have to do it whether we're worried about it or not. I'm not, I have no hesitancy with any of the proposals that have been made that someone's gonna do it, but we have to prove to the fraud.
Maybe we're in the weeds too much. We, I guess, just clarify when you're ready, Randy.
Okay, yeah, this was just to give you numbers to kinda think about before the work sessions at the next meeting.
Thank you.
And then to notify you, I did forward an email to the commission this morning during the meeting that with the wind and the trash pickup, Megan has decided to go ahead and close the landfill at 1:00 today. And she's gonna be working with commercial haulers to open, to bring them in, I think a little early tomorrow, of things they don't get dropped off by 1:00. So the wind, it is pretty bad today and trying to keep up with the litter. So she has decided to follow her policy and go ahead and close this afternoon. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Hurst, okay. Well, I wanna just thank the citizens out there in businesses. Had a phone call Saturday from a person who also runs a business that had some, an idea that could be transformed into something good for the county. And so with that, I took that idea to Randy and to the chamber. And they're going to look at, see if we can make this happen or at least see the possibilities. So, you know, without that citizen input, we're not aware of a lot of things. And so if someone has an idea, I think it's important to just contact us or the office, Shonda or Randy, and let them know about things. But I appreciate that, that opportunity to know about a potential impact upon the county. And the other thing is, went to the grocery store the other day, bought $45 worth of food, had six plastic bags to put that $45 in. Now, I, we all have reusable sacks. There's one grocery store that you bring your own in or they provide you boxes. Those boxes are paper, they will disintegrate. I do not understand why we aren't using more reusable sacks when we go to grocery store. I think that's something that needs to be talked about at the state level as well as the local level. Several years ago, I know Pretty Prairie had a bunch of reusable and they handed them out to those people who wanted them. Even if they were available to purchase at cost. Surely not much over a dollar a piece to reuse. And solve a lot of our problems because these plastic sacks don't disintegrate like paper does. So we used to always get paper. So I would just urge people to use reusables. Keep them in your car vehicle when you go to shop and pull them out and use them. I know even, I've thought about buying some for the farmers, for myself at the farmer's market and saying, "Oh, here it is for the cost of my ass." Because I'm just as guilty of using plastic there because they're cheap and I can't afford to charge people that extra money to do a reusable just to buy a dozen ears or so. But that's my, that's my gripe, complain, let's start using them. And that's all.
That's, that's good. I would say if you really want to change, you know, it kinda used to feel like it was kind of a, I don't know, a very, kind of very progressive thing to charge somebody for a sack. But anymore, knowing what it does to the landfill and all the mess it makes, having some economic incentive to bring your own bag might actually not be a bad idea. So, you know, I think if you truly wanna change something in Reno County, you're gonna have to propose something, Commissioner Hurst. I don't think the state's gonna do it, but. Commissioner Sellers, you got anything to add on Hurst's comments? Or would you like to go ahead?
Well, thank you. I believe you've, the state legislature passed legislation that cities cannot deal away with plastic bags.
Okay, there you go.
That's an over.
Can't do the thing.
Isn't that correct that they did?
I believe that's correct, but I believe that that was vetoed yesterday. So you are correct that the legislature passed it, but my understanding is the governor vetoed that so cities and, cities could do legislative, municipal ordinances if they wanted to.
Second item, and I apologize for not bringing this up at the appropriate time. On the county clerk's report this month, she has a concern that the legislature is requiring a watermark on ballots that could cost us six times the amount to print. I know this isn't the appropriate time, but I would suggest that the county send a letter to our local legislators in this time that they adjourned to say that this isn't necessary and is just adding expenses to elections that aren't necessary. I would hope that we object to this additional cost for elections. On the positive side, I'd like to compliment Karen Hammersmith for the award that she got from Tech. Tech recently gave her an award for outstanding service to the tech clients, special needs clients that have different requests and issues that the health department can help with. And I think it's always great when a county employee gets recognized by other groups. And so I'm gonna compliment Karen for this award. One question about this spreadsheet that you sent out just this morning, is the revision sheet, Randy, is that just meant to be our latest look at pots of money and where you think we're headed at this point? And if so, that shows us $1.8 million spending too much?
Right, the one that says revisions, I believe is the one that showed, that I mentioned today, that you identified, the column that's identified by commission as the buckets and then possibilities. You tried to use all or give everyone something, so that is the right to add.
Okay, well, I guess my only question there is that, to me, that there's some items on there that we haven't even discussed, I don't think. Line 14, it might be discussed between the administrator and all of us. And I also totally agree with our chairman on this contingencies. I think that's out of order. And in some way, I think we ought to put it on the agencies that we might be giving money to to provide the documentation that's necessary for this. I think that some of the people that have requested funds do have their own audits and so forth. And I would hope that the county wouldn't have to spend near $500,000 for contingencies, consultants and audit fees. I think that's all I have, Karen.
Thank you, Commissioner Sellers. Couple of comments that I had. The, and we can talk about it more next, next meeting. I, I'm softening a little on the, maybe the use of our housing investment funds that we've allocated to ARPA. I completely, and it has nothing to do with the bulk of the proposals from Interfaith and SCED. I just, I'm wondering if we're getting the multiplier effect that we ought to be seeking on those funds. I completely appreciate the idea of rehabilitation of aging housing stock. But I think there could be an argument or a conversation that could be made related to leveraging private investment to build new housing and what the impact of that would be to kind of incentivize the market with new housing stock and create some competition. Right now, it seems like we have a low amount of supply in housing stock, which perhaps inflates rental costs on lower-end housing. And so, you know, putting more supply in the market may put some pressures economically to solve that issue. And so I guess to summarize, you know, if we can take a dollar and make it free because it will change the lack of investment we're seeing in new housing stock, I think it could have a ripple-down effect economically and actually be more impactful. So I'm just gonna let that sit there. I know we're gonna have a conversation in a couple of weeks on that. I'm not, like I said, my, I'm kind of open to thoughts on that. And I understand I'm just one, one vote, but I'd ask the commissioners to consider that, the thought that perhaps we could leverage that money and make it go further. The, I'm looking at my notes here. Boy, I had one other thing. But I can't remember.
Mr. Freezen, I like your thoughts on going forward, but I wanna see a little more, little more information on your thoughts regarding that. Because as we deal with obsolescence and attraction of people, I would be interested in hearing where your thoughts are going with that. Because we have a lot of different, there are several housing programs available for, through USDA also, and that I think has been overlooked some. Now, with the dollar values on that, if they've changed any, maybe you might know, but I don't know whether they, with the present cost of building, whether they've upped that any or not with real housing.
I don't know. The only thing I really know about housing is that this community and also Barton, the two I work in are both trying to figure out how to get more housing. It's a very common theme that everyone's trying to tackle. That's, that's really what I know. No one's figured out exactly how to do it yet.
NRP offers some opportunities.
Maybe this is the conversation. No, it's fine. I, like I said, I'm hoping to, I just think that there is, continues to be barriers to private investment that perhaps we could, we could overcome with some of this funding. The, sorry, I had some other comments, but I can't. Did we ever get an answer on the insurance on the dome?
No, they have not. Say, Harland contacted me this morning, he's reached out to them again, Travelers, and according to Harland, they don't have the engineers report yet. It's a person making the decision, so we do not have an answer.
Did we ask about like the $40,000 worth of scaffolding?
We, we've tried to cut back on the cost and at this point, Ishni is not willing to lower the amount.
Did you ask them how much it costs to buy scaffolding?
No, didn't get to that, but they have not given any, any leeway. They're not moving at this point.
Well, I, I wouldn't blame them for not moving. We already approved the money, but.
They haven't ordered the supply yet.
Okay.
Maybe we can buy that scaffolding from the people they rented from and rent it to the company.
Rent them back, yeah. No, I appreciate all of the efforts this morning from all involved. It seemed like a pretty efficient meeting. I hope the commission liked the format. We tried to keep all the presentations to five to 10 minutes, so thank you. Thank you, Randy. Unless there's final comments, I'll adjourn the meeting today. Thank you.